Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Okay, good afternoon, good evening, and welcome to the April 14, 2025 Town of Extra Select Board Meeting. As the hour is 6:30, I will call the meeting to order. And our first business this evening will be conducting three board interviews down in the Wheelwright Room until approximately 7 o'clock, which time the board will reconvene up in the Novak Room to conduct our regular business meeting. Thank you.
For this week's report, the Fire Department conducts training exercises. Exeter will host its first accessibility forum to hear from the community. The Stuff the Bus Food Drive is this weekend. The Select Board discusses police K-9 units and the bike and pedestrian study. The Exeter Lit Fest wrapped up after another great weekend. And Parks and Recreation hosts the Exeter Egg Hunt and a final chance to play at Planet Playground. For Exeter TV, I'm Dan Monchek, and this is the Exeter Biweekly Report. Let's get started. Good afternoon, Exeter. Thanks for tuning into the show today. If you haven't already, hit the subscribe button and like this video to help spread the word about the show and all things Exeter. For our first segment, the Fire Department was graciously given the opportunity to train in a historic home slated for demolition. Gabe Perez has the story.
Exeter firefighters saw through the roof of an old home on Front Street. This training exercise is a rare opportunity for the department to practice on real buildings within the town. With this particular home approved for demolition in the future, the homeowners lent it to the department to help train their people on important procedures.
We were gracious enough to get this building for training. It's sad to see a historic home be torn down. So for us to be able to get in and utilize those, since our house stock is largely older homes, to learn layouts, and they're all different, they're not a standard layout, it's just as invaluable to get into what we primarily would see for houses in this area.
It is definitely harder to get houses like this, so the real hands-on training is a little bit harder to come from. So when we're doing training at the station and stuff like this, we try to make it as real as possible.
Over the last couple of weeks, we've been able to do some interior stuff, so we were able to pull hose lines off the engine and move it throughout the structure, do some firefighter rescues, victim rescues. We've done some overhaul work, so we took apart some walls, and then we were up on the roof cutting holes for ventilation.
On Monday, one by one, different firefighters would take their turns ascending the ladder, practicing their turns using the chainsaw, axes, and hammers to create entry points on top of the roof.
Obviously roofs have different pitches. The steeper the pitch, the more difficult it is for us to work off of. The shallower the pitch, we're able to walk on without necessarily needing a ladder, but in some instances, we need to step off of a ladder, and by putting a halogen with a pick on it, gives us a foothold so we can stand on and reach further out to make a bigger hole.
With one shift done, the next shift would try their hand at it the next day. Using a chainsaw, halogen, and other tools, a coordinated team cuts a hole in the rooftop, releasing hot gases and smoke from within the room below, giving a second team from within the building the ability to see through the smoke better and cool down the room, aiding in finding any individuals left within a burning home. With the roof full of holes and everyone up to speed, it was time to try something new.
In this scenario, they were doing, they call VES, it's Vent Enter Search, so it's a rapid search of a room that we think somebody might be in to check for victims. So what they're doing in that instance, they're trying to get in the room as quickly as they can, and when they're on the ground sweeping, they're checking to make sure that when they come in the window, there's not anybody directly below them. They're sweeping to get glass fragments and things out of the way. And then when they come in, they want to get lower to the grounds in cases of really a lot of smoke that's banked down to the ground. They want to be able to look underneath it and find the layout of the room, because in those situations, you can't see anything.
Just as fast as they're in, they're out, with some lessons to be learned along the way. Each day this week, different shifts will take their turns with this building. For some, this is just another day of the week, a refresher on skills they've already achieved before, but for others, this is a new experience altogether.
We had one newer person who struggled a little bit on the roof and just needed to really come back. We did some more practicing at the station, and we came back to reevaluate that.
It was my first time on a real roof, and it was my first time on a roof that was pitched that steep. I was having a really hard time figuring out how to operate the chainsaw close to my face. I'm not the biggest person here. Just because something is harder doesn't mean that I'm not expected to do it. So just because something is harder doesn't mean that I can't work around it and figure out how to be able to get it done. So figuring out ways that I can work smarter, not harder, as my mentor Tom keeps telling me, has been super helpful.
Training doesn't stop the rest of the world, however. With each time they went up, they were brought back down just as quickly, as emergency calls forced the shift to their regular duties. Not once, not twice, but three separate times. By then, hours had passed, and they'd have to try again another time. The following week, Cadence climbed back on the roof.
I was using a size medium SCBA mask, a big mask. We were on the front. Today, I switched to a small mask and all of a sudden felt significantly better. It felt like all of a sudden I had my body mechanics again. I've had to figure out different ways of doing things for myself, just because I don't have the same, I don't have the same reach as them. I don't have the same length in my legs as them. Last week, I ran into issues on the roof. This week, I was able to get the cuts done, get through the shingles, and make it happen. So as Tom, I think, has said for the past nine months, to me, at least once a shift works smarter, not harder.
She did really, really well. So all that practice has really paid off, and she's kind of the one that's really stepped up.
The sacrifice of this old property on Front Street has given the Fire Department the room to learn, adapt, and develop their skills for when truly dangerous scenarios appear. For newer firefighters such as Cadence, those learned skills become critical when duty calls, keeping our town safer and protected, one roof at a time.
Speaking of the Fire Department, for those curious about the condition of the dog that had fallen into the river a few weeks ago, Gabe the Dog has been sent home, safe and sound with his family, and is learning not to chase ducks around the park anymore. Up next, we spoke to Exeter resident Amanda Kelly, who is working with the Planning and Sustainability Department about the town's upcoming accessibility forum.
Hi, my name's Amanda Kelly, and I'm a resident of Exeter, and I'm super excited to share with you the new Exeter Accessibility Forum that the town is putting on. Hopefully, this is the first of an annual forum that they'll be hosting. It's the town planner Dave Sharples and the town building inspector slash ADA coordinator Doug Eastman, and it's going to be a listening session for residents to come and tell the town everything you'd like to see for accessibility. So the town already has an ADA study done in 2018, and they're working through that list. So this theme is really beyond ADA. What would you like to see in town? I know I've personally worked with my daughter on getting some universal changing stations in town, accessible matting at the playgrounds, a sensory-friendly space at the holiday parade, and lots of things like that that aren't spelled out in the ADA, but are accessibility things that we need in town. So we want to hear from you. What else would you like to see?
The Accessibility Forum will be held on Wednesday, May 7, at 5:30 PM in the Novak Room of the town offices. Attendees can join in person or virtually via Zoom. For more information, visit the town website, exeternh.gov.
The Stuff the Bus Drive is this weekend. Here's one last reminder about how the Exeter Rotary is working to end hunger in Exeter and how you can help. This Saturday, April 12, the annual Stuff the Bus Food Drive is coming back to Exeter. The Community Assistance Center has seen a drastic increase in demand for their services, so your help is needed now more than ever.
Stuff the Bus is critical because of the time of the year that it falls on. The summertime, when children are out of school, is our busiest time of year.
If you're interested in donating, you can visit Hannaford of Exeter, or Market Basket and Shaws of Stratum, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM this Saturday. Each of these participating stores will have prepackaged bags full of goods that the food bank needs. For more information about this event, you can head over to exeter rotary dot org to learn more. The Select Board met last Monday to discuss several items, including a grant to start a K-9 unit in the Exeter Police Department, and the findings from the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan Study. Here's a quick recap from our Meeting Minute series. This is your Meeting Minute for the March 31 Select Board Meeting. Chief Pullen and Deputy Chief McCain from the Exeter Police Department came to the Select Board seeking acceptance of a grant from the Stanton K-9 Foundation for the amount of $32,000. The purpose of this grant is to kickstart a K-9 patrol unit for the town. The police dog would serve two purposes: search and rescue, and narcotics detection.
Several years ago, we had a person with dementia wander off, and it was many hours until they were found on the side of the river in Swayze. Could have been a very tragic incident. Had we had had a tracking K-9, that person would have hounded much quicker.
K-9s are already in use in Exeter, but the town has to rely on outside jurisdictions to provide them. Having a police dog would make the town self-reliant and capable of deploying a K-9 faster. An Exeter resident voiced her concerns regarding some of the negative aspects of having a police dog in town. This spawned conversation about those concerns.
Your concerns are legitimate. I am assured by our chief and his assistant chief's track record that they know how to do this.
It all comes down to making sure the program is solid, has a solid embedded best practices policy, which we do, and vetting of the officer and constant supervision. Because at the end of the day, I'm answering. I'm answering to this, and I'm not going to stick my neck out for something that I think is going to fail.
I trust the two of you, and I also am worried about the implications of enhanced policing and who are we looking for. So like, those are the things that I'm nervous about.
I feel comfortable that you've done your due diligence. I think your concerns are legitimate. Yours are certainly legitimate, given where we're at right now. But I trust our community. I trust our public safety, and I think this is going to be a benefit.
The board moved to accept the grant with a vote of four to one. Up next, Scott Bogle from Rockingham Planning Commission was present to discuss the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. This plan seeks to make walking and biking safer and more accessible to Exeter residents. It includes 50 project recommendations to improve crossing safety, extend sidewalks to connect neighborhoods, widen shoulders for safer biking, and improve access to trails. While these projects are a big piece of the puzzle, they're not the sole solution. As Mr. Bogle puts it...
It's not just about engineering. It's not just that if you build it, they will come. You also need to do some other things to ensure people are comfortable getting out there.
To accomplish the goal of making Exeter streets more accessible for everyone, the plan is structured around the five Es, which includes education on safe road usage, encouragement to bike and walk in town, enforcement of traffic laws, engineering improvements, and evaluation of the plan through data collection.
When we get these reports, we follow up and do what we need to do to get things done. So that's, I'm so excited about this.
One of the things I've noticed is that people are taking their thoughts about these reports from newspaper headlines. Can you folks read the reports? Can I give you some homework? At least read an executive summary, if not the entire report. I have had so many conversations with individuals like, "Oh, you can't do that." And it's based on a newspaper article that in no way encapsulates what the report is saying.
If you're interested in reading the plan yourself, it can be found on our website at exeternh.gov. The next Select Board Meeting will take place on April 14 in the Novak Room. See you there. Exeter Lit Fest returned to the Town Hall last weekend, bringing together authors, journalists, and poets. We were there to capture the event and have this recap.
The Exeter Lit Fest came and went this weekend during a somewhat chilly day in the Exeter Town Hall. Both floors were packed with folks in attendance from all around, who had come to watch and listen to authors and literary individuals from all over. Notable individuals being J. Courtney Sullivan, author of The Cliffs, who kicked off the weekend with a talk with Lit Fest Board Chair Katie Adams, with an hour-long discussion about her work. The upstairs gallery had its fair share of speakers as well, with the first of the day being a panel about the world of self-publishing. Both halves of the Exeter Town Hall kept busy throughout the day, as both halls emptied and refilled with each passing speaker, including returning speaker Keith O'Brien, giving a talk with Dan Provost, or a group panel discussion about romanticy novels featuring author Jacqueline Benson, Laura Mayo, and Lyra Saleen. Guests were then given the opportunity to meet with the authors after their talks, have their books signed, and just talk with them on a personal basis. There was plenty going on around the Town Hall between the hours of 11 to 5:00 PM. While the cold weather kept things nippy, folks continued to persist to engage with the speakers and give the Lit Fest another incredible year here in Exeter.
And for our last segment, we have information about two back-to-back events at the Rec Park next weekend. The annual Exeter Egg Hunt, followed by a send-off party for Planet Playground.
Parks and Rec invites you to join their very special Saturday at the Rec Park on April 19.
Saturday, April 19. Join us at Rec Park for our annual Exeter Egg Hunt. We're really excited to bring back this community tradition. It'll start at 10:00 AM sharp with our pre-K division and finish up with our 3rd through 5th grade.
Eggs will be hidden all across the Exeter Rec Park, where children of all ages will be welcome to come and find what secrets they can, including the very special golden eggs.
Golden egg finders will go home with a special prize.
But that's not the end of this special day.
Directly after the Egg Hunt will be our send-off for Planet Playground.
With the new Planet Playground installation on the horizon, the previous Planet Playground will be no more in just a short bit of time.
We invite the community to join us for one last orbit around Planet Playground before we relaunch the new Planet Playground later this spring.
Planet Playground's send-off kicks off at 11:00, where there will be fun and refreshments for all who attend. Expect a day of fun and nostalgia as we celebrate change.
We'd like to invite all the previous donors and volunteers who were part of the original Planet Playground fundraising project to pick up their pickets that will be available at the relaunch. We're going to be launching our Buy a Brick fundraising program to continue our efforts for fundraising for enhancements and renovations at the new Planet Playground.
So remember, Saturday, April 19, starting at 10:00 AM will be the annual Easter Egg Hunt, with special rewards and prizes, followed by the Planet Playground Sendoff, a last huzzah for Planet Playground's last trip around the sun. For more information, you can visit exeternh.gov/recreation.
That does it for this week's report. Be sure to like, share, and subscribe to help spread the word. Head over to the town website and subscribe to the town email newsletter to get this show and other news sent straight to your inbox. We'll be back on April 25 for the next edition of the show. For Exeter TV, I'm Dan Monchek, and this has been the Exeter Biweekly Report. Have a great weekend, Exeter.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well. Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16. And can be found on Channel 8. With all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV.
Okay, as the hour is 7 o'clock, the Exeter Select Board will continue their meeting. We called the meeting to order at 6:30, at which time we went down to the Wheelwright Room and conducted three board interviews. And as the hour is now 7 o'clock, we will commence our regular business meeting. I'd like to say good evening to everybody, my respective colleagues on the board, town staff, those in attendance, and certainly those watching at home. And once again, this is the Town of Exeter, April 14th.
Could you speak louder?
My apologies, I can't quite hear you.
No.
I will, I will try to speak louder. How's that? Is that good?
It doesn't sound like the mic is working.
The mics are not. They're for the TV, they're not for in here.
I can hear you really well. I just asked you to turn these mics.
Gabe, can you turn the mics up a little bit?
Because I have a lot to say, so people need to be able to hear me.
I'd like to.
I'm glad you interrupted.
Is there something we can do?
I turned the speakers up, but it does run a risk of feedback, so I can only turn it up so much.
Okay, thank you, Gabe. How's that? Is that better?
Yeah. Oh, it is a little bit better, I can hear you.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I will start by introducing the board. To my right, Selectman Dan Chartran, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Our Vice Chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan, good evening.
Hi, everyone, thanks for being here.
To my left, our Clerk, Selectwoman Nancy Belanger, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Selectwoman Julie Gilman, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Our Town Manager, Mr. Rustine, good evening.
Good evening.
Our Assistant Town Manager in the back, Melissa Roy, good evening. Our Recording Secretary, Joanna Bartel, good evening, Joanna. And my name is Nico Papakosandis. Again, thank you and welcome. We're going to start this evening by asking Chief Poole to come forward to talk about a recent accreditation that the Exeter Police Department has been working on for some time now. And Chief, I'll ask you to speak to that. I'm not going to steal all of your thunder, but I do have a comment when you're finished. Good evening.
So, yes, proud to announce that the Exeter Police Department received national accreditation through CALEA. It's been several years in the making. And, you know, when we started this endeavor, I knew we had a good solid foundation of professional employees and a good foundation of good working policies. And above all, we had a good employee in Lieutenant Steve Boldick, who took the reins as Accreditation Manager, and really stepped out of his shell in doing that and did a great job. So, to be one of the 5% in the United States that have reached this level, only the 18th Department in New Hampshire Municipal Law Enforcement Department, New Hampshire, to reach this level. And that says a lot, seeing as CALEA's been around since 1979. So, really, for a little overview of what CALEA is, what accreditation is nationally, unlike the fire service or the fire protection, where they have a set of national standards and codes, there is no such national standards or codes for policing. So this is the next best thing, and it really helps us to focus on being at the top of the game, the best practices in policing, and constantly revising our policies and procedures to meet those goals. And yeah, so very, very excited to have accomplished this. It's something that we've been thinking about it for a long time, and really just put our heads together several years ago and said we can make this happen.
Well, congratulations, for sure, and I know that you've put a lot of time and effort. Congratulations to you. I'd just like to say that as part of the process, there was a CALEA, and remember the chief from South Carolina that came up? What was her relationship to the CALEA? Could you describe that?
Yes, so the process was very in-depth, again, several years, and that entailed a deep dive into our current policies and procedures, to revise them, to add new ones that we didn't have. And that was everything from going through our materials, cloud-based materials by assessors that would log into our site and go through that way. And then the chief that came up was an onsite assessor. And she came up, and she spent several days here in Exeter and really got to know our folks, interviewed employees, interviewed some of you folks, interviewed other members of the community, just to get a real grasp as to what, are the Exeter Police doing everything that they say they're doing, and are they doing it right? So that was really a hands-on effort. And then, in addition to that, we had what's called the Northern New England Accreditation Coalition, which in New England, we're very fortunate to have these folks. These are current and retired members of law enforcement that have come from an accredited agency and that go to the trainings every year. And they came onsite and did another deep down of everything, spent all day with us, and really, you know, nitpicked all of our items and what we could improve upon and what we were good at prior to that chief coming up. So there's a lot of checks and balances along the way, and we received accolades out in California for having no issues.
And that was really the last step, right, going to California?
Yes, sir.
Terrific, terrific. When the assessor was up here for several days, as the chief said, she met with members of the community, members of the police department, employees here, and I was part of, I think, a two-hour interview with Mr. Dean, Ms. Roy, and Mr. Stevens, our Finance Director. And what really impressed me, but did not surprise me, was at the end of the meeting, she took out her laptop and said that after spending several days with you and the department, she had taken notes as to what she wanted to implement at her station in South Carolina, and that said everything. So, congratulations.
Wonderful.
Any questions or comments from the board, from Chief Poole?
Just congratulations and thank you for putting all the work in.
Thank you. It's a big accomplishment. Thank you. Did you want to get a picture with the board? You said, okay, we can do that. Where are we going?
Where are we going?
So, I think he was hoping to have you guys in front, so you're going to get creative. I'd like to get the permit up. Don't all go too fast.
Okay.
I was teasing.
Hello.
Ready to get Josh in there, Scott?
Yeah, right here. The short people in the front, right? We're going down. Sorry.
Yeah, you really don't.
I'm going down.
Okay. All right. Are you ready? Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, it's still on your chair. That's not, that's all.
I mean, I'd do that, but I think so. I want to shake my hand.
Congratulations.
Chief, thank you.
Well done.
Congratulations. Okay.
So we have one more, one more recognition this evening. We'd like to recognize Officer Stephen Petrowski for 40 years of service. Officer Petrowski, good evening.
Police Department. And I believe you began your career in 1985 after serving in the United States Army, the military police. And your main attraction to coming to Exeter was the community and the opportunity to positively interact with the folks in this community. In 2008, Officer Petrowski officially retired, but remained working in a part-time capacity with the Exeter Police Department. In 2015, Mr. Petrowski was asked if he would have any interest in teaching DARE. DARE is the acronym for Drug Abuse Resistance Education. They get that right? Okay, thank you. He said he would be open to the opportunity, and it proved to be a perfect match through the years. And I know my kids were lucky enough to work with you through their years in school and working in the DARE program. I believe the chief told me that one of your many quotes was that you would tell the kids that you are the reason I'm here every day. In 2017, Officer Petrowski was named the state of New Hampshire's Top DARE Instructor. Then in 2021, he was named the DARE Instructor of the Year by DARE, which I believe was the first time in New Hampshire. Incredible. We congratulate you in achieving 40 years. And I don't know that I can stand and hold the mic at the same time, so I will, I'd like to just read this real quick. The Town of Exeter Employee Service Award to Officer Stephen Petrowski, in appreciation of 40 years of committed, reliable, courteous, competent, and extraordinary dedication and service to the residents of the Town of Exeter, presented by the Select Board on this 14th day of April 2025. Congratulations, Officer Petrowski.
I want to thank everyone. It's been a pleasure. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you for your service. Thank you. I'll just do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Steve. Thank you, Chief. Okay. Our next order of business this evening is the Arbor Day Proclamation of April 25th, 2025. Madam Clerk, would you like to read the proclamation?
Sorry, I was still in the moment there. Okay, that was nice. Town of Exeter, New Hampshire, proclamation, in the year of our Lord 2025, Arbor Day, April 25th, 2025. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce lifesaving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resources, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of our business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Select Board Chair of the Town of Exeter, do hereby proclaim the 25th of April, 2025, as Arbor Day in the Town of Exeter, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day by supporting efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and well-being of this and future generations.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
It's an honor.
I will mention it now, this would have come up later in Select Board Committee reports, but as the Select Board Rep to the Tree Committee, I'm happy to announce that the Town of Exeter has received a six-year award for being included in Tree City USA.
That's wonderful. They do say that.
It's a wonderful achievement and the Tree Committee works very, very hard. So they're going to be planning an Arbor Day event. It doesn't have to be on April 25th, I learned, but they will be letting us know whenever that is.
Good.
So thank you very much.
One of our Tree Committee members is...
Are you here for Arbor Day? Come on in.
I thought I was here with the rest of the group.
Okay.
Well, thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Gwen. Gwen English, the Secretary of the Tree Committee, the note taker, the minutes taker, and among other things, many other things. Thank you very much. Okay?
Thanks.
Next on the agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to step up with a comment to the Select Board. We do ask if your comments are relative to an agenda item, that you wait for that agenda item to come up. But I'll pause for a moment if anybody has any public comment. You are on the agenda, correct? And there's nobody online for public comment, so we'll move on. The next order of business is the approval of the regular meeting minutes of March 31, 2025. I would ask the board if there are any revisions or amendments to the minutes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have two revisions.
Okay.
On page nine of our packet, under the motion for a religious exemption, we have the motion passing 5-0. I did vote nay on that, so the motion passed four to one.
That's correct.
And then on the following page, the correct spelling of Derek Wyskiel's name is W-Y-S-K-I-E-L.
Thank you.
Yep. I think I got that right.
You did. Any other revisions or amendments to the minutes? Again, and seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting Minutes of March 31, 2025, as amended.
So moved.
I'll second.
Is a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Next order of business is appointments. We have two sets of appointments. We have the interviews from earlier and then we have our annual board reappointments to those that would like to remade on their committees, respectively. Let's start with the folks that we interviewed this evening. I would entertain a motion to appoint Barbara Ramkounis to the 250th Celebration Commission for a term to expire 12/31/26.
So moved. Second.
So motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to appoint Tom Cokely to the Arts and Culture Advisory Commission for a term to expire April 2027. This is a voting member to the committee.
So moved.
So motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And I would entertain a motion to appoint Kathy Corson to the 250th Celebration Commission with a term to expire 12/31/26.
So moved. Second.
So motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We want to thank Barbara, Tom, and Kathy for their respective volunteer work for these two committees. Mr. Dean, your office will be in touch with them in the next day or so?
We will.
Terrific, okay. Next, I would entertain a motion, and these are all three-year terms, correct, Mr. Dean?
Yes, except for the Housing Authority, that's a five-year term.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to reappoint Langdon Plummer to a three-year term on the Planning Board.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to reappoint Gwen English to the Planning Board for a three-year appointment.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to reappoint Mike Whistler to the Rec Advisory Board for a term to expire in three years.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I entertain a motion to reappoint Jen Harrington to the Rec Advisory Board for a three-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I entertain a motion to reappoint Laura Davies to the Zoning Board of Adjustment for a three-year term.
So moved.
Second.
So motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I'd entertain a motion to reappoint Andrew Coff to the Conservation Commission for a three-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I'd entertain a motion to reappoint Connor Madison to a three-year term in the Conservation Commission.
So moved.
Second.
So motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to reappoint Kyle Welch to the Conservation Commission for a three-year term.
So moved.
Second.
So motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to reappoint Patricia Scott Hall to the Exeter Housing Authority Commission for a five-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I'd entertain a motion to reappoint Boyd Allen to the Exeter Housing Authority Commission for a five-year term.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I'd entertain a motion to reappoint Bill Campbell to the Heritage Commission for a three-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to reappoint Verity Boyer to the Historic District Commission for a three-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to reappoint Alan Mangan to the Facilities Committee for a three-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to reappoint Lindsay Sonnet to the Housing Advisory Committee for a three-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to reappoint Terri Harmon to the River Advisory Committee for a three-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to reappoint Christopher Zigmont to the Sustainability Advisory Committee for a three-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to reappoint Jackie Ojala to the Sustainability Advisory Committee for a three-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to reappoint Carl Wickstrom to the Water Sewer Advisory Committee for a term to expire in three years.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to reappoint Kelsey Dunville to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee for a three-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to reappoint Florence Ruffner to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee for a three-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And finally, I would entertain a motion to reappoint Jeannie Wright to the Tax Exemption and Credit Advisory Committee for a three-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I want to thank all of these people for volunteering to be reappointed to their respective committees. We appreciate the work that they do for our town. Very vital way in which our town moves forward is with our volunteers that work for our committees. We would not be able to function without them, so we appreciate their work. Okay, at this time, I'm going to read the notice of a public hearing. The Exeter Select Board will be conducting a public hearing on Monday, April 14, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Novak Room of the Exeter Town Office, 10th Front Street, Exeter, New Hampshire, to consider the following proposed recommendations made by the E-911 Committee: to change the street numbering on Meeting Place Drive accordingly in compliance with Chapter 14 of the Town Ordinance, assigning street names and numbers, and as depicted on the attached map date dated 6/11/24. At this time, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
So motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is open. One moment, please. Mr. Fritz, did you want to...
Mr. Chair, I have a motion actually that I would like to make. I would like to move to table this. I think that we are not in a position to have this happen right now. I think that there is a lot of uncertainty and I think that we can, my hope is that we can work with all of you to make sure that we have everybody's contact information because if, you know, I think that, I will speak for myself here, but I do serve on the E-911 Committee and I do think that this is a matter of safety and security and I also think that we are in flux in a real way that I do not think is going to change anytime soon. And I am not willing to put documents and all of that at risk right now. So I would love to table this with additional discussion to come at a further time or we can all agree that we can take this back up.
Is it appropriate to do that in the middle of a public hearing, Mr. Chair? I would be happy to second if it is.
I don't think so.
Well, the public hearing is open.
Open.
So the public hearing should likely be closed, I would think.
And I also don't want to cut off debate, but I don't want to, you know, I want you to know that that is the motion that I'm going to make at whatever appropriate time to make that.
How about if I make this motion? I would like, in light of the move to table this for the moment, I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing. And I apologize to the public that's gathered and taken the time to come out, but I would like to close the public hearing.
I wish I understood what...
I agree with Molly that this is not the right time for us to take this.
But I don't understand why. So, okay, so before we go anywhere, I will, because I don't think we can keep going with the public hearing open, so I'm gonna second the motion to close the public hearing, just so we can understand, I don't understand what the concerns are. I just don't, I'm not in the loop. I have no idea.
I don't think there's any loop. I think Select Woman Cowan...
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to imply a loop. I just don't know.
I'm in agreement with Select Woman Cowan. This is not the right time to take this up and I apologize to you.
Okay.
Can I ask if you want to make the motion to table this, which means that everything stays status quo for now? Then I think appropriately it is right that the public, a motion be made to close the public hearing. When the motion is made and if there's a second, I would open it up for discussion. I have something that I would want to make clear to the public so that everybody understands what I think you're trying to...
So I will make a motion to close the public hearing, again, with apologies to all those who have taken the time to gather here tonight.
And I will second it again.
Okay. There is a motion to close the public hearing, there's a second to close the public hearing. I'm opening it up for discussion amongst the board. In moving forward, should Select Woman Cowan make the motion to table this? What that means is, is that everything would stay status quo for the time being. I agree with you, I would be very reluctant to close a public hearing without hearing from the public. However, I recognize all of you and we had an extensive public hearing in the fall and your testimony is still very fresh in my mind.
Mine as well.
So in considering closing the public hearing, it's not because we're not interested in what you have to say, we've heard what you have to say and I think that part of that is what Select Woman Cowan is getting that, that she's not comfortable yet with moving forward with this.
I think, I mean, I'm happy to take questions also, but...
So procedurally, we have a motion and a second. I'm not gonna, everybody can ask a question if they'd like after, but we have to procedurally move through this, okay? I want to ask the board, this is what I'm understanding anyway, and I could be wrong. Are we comfortable closing the public hearing in anticipation of a motion that's going to be made because we feel comfortable that we've heard the testimony of the folks that were here in the fall?
Well, I can say, I trust Molly's judgment. I don't, I'm not on that committee, I haven't watched it, I don't know what's going on with it. I'm just concerned that we put it on the agenda and now we're not. And this is not typical, just so you know, we don't normally do this.
I'm happy to speak to this and I would like to keep this as vague as possible, but I do not want documents flying through the mail right now and I don't want to burden folks with something that we can't guarantee.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. If there's any more discussion amongst the board about the motion to close the public hearing, we'll have that. If Select Woman Cowan makes a motion subsequent to this and there's a second, I would ask you, Select Woman Cowan, if you would consider, if folks have questions, we will take questions. The public hearing's closed, so we don't want to hear testimony, but if you have a question on what we are doing, I would be very happy to take your questions.
Okay, so technically, we have a motion to close the public hearing and a second, but we haven't voted on it, so we need to...
I'm just trying to...
No, I'm trying to understand the process here. It's in a little gray area. So if we do that, we, for the planning board, we would open it up, reopen the public hearing, let the public, close the public hearing, and then Molly would do her vote if you want to allow people to speak.
Yes, that is not...
I think it would be appropriate to entertain questions. I think that if...
So we can do that?
If we're voting to close the public hearing, just, you know, to, you know, we've heard the testimony, so...
So we'll just vote on Dan's motion?
So there's a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any further discussion amongst the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is closed.
So now I'm gonna make a motion to open public hearing because we need to do that. Just for the public, then Molly would do her motion. This will allow the people to talk.
Yeah, I don't think you need to make a motion though.
Well, once, before we do that procedurally, once anybody makes a motion, if Select Woman Cowan is going to make a motion and it's seconded, then we cannot take public comment as a motion.
Right, that's my point.
So you want to reopen the public hearing?
If we're gonna.
I think the Chair could invite people to speak, we don't need to do a public hearing.
We just, we just closed the public hearing.
Who knows Robert's rules?
Well, this is what we would do on the planning board, so I'm gonna still make my motion to open public hearing, open the public hearing, if anyone wants to second it.
Public hearing for what?
For what the public hearing is for, for the people to be able to talk.
Would you withdraw that so I could make a point?
Well, if someone seconds it, we can make a point and say, no, if you want.
I don't think we need your motion, I think the Chair can invite people to speak, Nancy.
I agree, if you're looking at me, I agree with Dan.
All right, then I'm gonna withdraw my motion and open, right.
But, but I'd like to be clear that if you, if you come to the microphone, we're gonna invite you, it's, the public hearing's closed, but if you have questions, which is something that we would do during a select board meeting, if somebody had questions on an agenda item, we would let them come up to the microphone. But we've heard, we've heard testimony, so I think that's.
So it's only questions, not?
Correct.
Questions about what we're doing here right now.
Well, I think the question that.
Could you step up, unfortunately?
Yep, and then you just have to say your name.
Your name and your address.
I got COVID last time I was here last fall, when my husband voted, so stay away from me. I think one of the main questions is if you table it, till when?
Well.
We're gonna talk about that, maybe.
Okay, 'cause there are a lot of questions that we have, I've done a lot of investigation with the post office and with the E-911 and the 911 and Wi-Fi and Xfinity and a whole bunch of the stuff, and I've gotten a lot more information, including, including with the issue of the bank and the addresses and the subdivision and all that, I've done a lot of homework, I spent a lot of sleepless nights, and as I had sent a message to you, because rumors were flying out of Vesta stating that it's already been decided, it's cut and brought.
So thank you for, thank you for bringing that up, because I do want to say this, okay, when you were all here in the fall, the select board told you, we tabled it, we tabled it at that point because of the elections that were coming up and the questions that we had, and I told you, and I did give you my word, that we would contact you and give you advance notice of when the next meeting was going to be.
Exactly.
We reached out to the property manager to try to get your names and addresses, because we were gonna all send you letters, certified mail, telling you that the meeting was gonna be April 14th.
Exactly.
The property manager would not release your names and addresses, we respected that, so because we had your email information, we sent you an email that, that I believe you said you didn't get.
Yes, I didn't get it, and for some reason it went to my husband's email.
So when you reached out, you know, we, we corresponded back and forth, and the chief and the deputy chief were, were part of that, so, you know, not for tonight, because we're, you know, we've got a meeting here, but we would like you to, and maybe the assistant town manager can help in this regard, if the property manager's not gonna give us your names and addresses, you can.
They don't work with us.
But you can.
Yes, I will try to get.
Yeah, so to be clear, we need a mailing list from you, you.
Yes.
Of everyone that lives in those properties.
And I do, you have, you have my telephone number, my mailing address, and my.
But we want to keep our, we want to notify you when and if this comes up again, and if the property manager, and I, I respect their reasons, if that's what their reasons are, but we want to work with you.
All of you, not just you.
Yeah, from the property manager, and this is, this is customary with Avesta, they really don't communicate.
Well, let's not, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to get into critique of the, but if, if we can get your names and addresses.
I will do that.
Then we can contact all of you in writing with lots of notice.
Okay.
Via certified mail.
Correct.
That's our goal, is to be able to contact you via certified mail.
So someone's gotta do some door knocking. Someone has to do some door knocking and ask if they want to.
Again, I've been told to not knock on people's doors, but I will get the word around, because I'm good at doing that.
Neighbor talking to people.
So we'll, we'll work with you, and we're, we're asking you for your help.
Yeah.
We're asking you for your help, so.
And the reason why I brought that up with you, as far as not, you know, being transparent or whatever, because I did, you gave me your word, and I took your word, and I believe the, the, you know, I believe you people on the board, however, I know that there are some people in this room who's had communication regarding this subject that aren't up front, so.
Well, you're working with us.
Yeah, and I'm not gonna mention.
And we're determined to do this in a cooperative.
We're committed to working with you, so, we've got some other folks that have questions, if we could, if we could let them come up?
So.
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, and it's a point of.
Could you please come up to the microphone?
It's a point of clarification, so you.
Wait, we need you to state your name and address for the record, please, thank you.
6 Meeting Place Drive, Apartment 305, so two points, one is, we need to find out if legally we can hand over addresses, if there's gonna be names with them, so we just need to check on that.
Well, if somebody gives me their name, then that's their, their.
Right, but we need to check on that, we can't just hand over, go through each, each door, we know who lives there, and then give your name and address.
No, that's not what I do.
So we need to check, we need to check whether that's legal or not, but my question to the board, or rather to you, Ms. Cowan, is, you're tabling the motion, and the meeting, the public meeting is now gonna be closed, are you going to discuss, are you tabling it for 15 minutes and we'll all leave, are you tabling it for a year?
Definitely.
If it's table, if, if, if a motion is made to table the discussion, and, and the vote is successful to table the discussion, we, we will not discuss it until we have another public hearing.
Oh.
And we should be notified.
Okay.
We're not, we're not asking you to leave so that we can talk about it, we're.
Yeah, that's not allowed.
I got it.
Yeah.
Thanks very much.
Do you have a question?
No, that's okay, that's okay.
Folks, we can't hear this woman.
Hi, my name is Irene Hall, I live at 4 Chauvin Circle in Exeter, my son is a resident of Avesta, he's an adult with a disability, and my question, I was not at the November meeting. My question is, in past careers, I was a business analyst for software, for statewide software, for several different states, working with an engineering team, so I know if we have statewide software, it'd be very common to have a question like, here's the need in our community, we have about 400 residents, many of whom are elderly or have disabilities, and we're concerned that they may, in, in an emergency, may not be able to remember, oh yeah, my address is not, 3 Meeting Place, it's 41 Meeting Place, will you know to do that when there's an emergency? So my thought was, I had a discussion with Doug Eastman to get more information, and then I went to the Emergency Services and Communications to find out about what software is the state using, and how could we resolve this, and then I see that there's a data operations liaison, which I'm not sure if we have them in our town, but would it be, this would be a typical question I would get from a community, so if, if someone calls and says 3 Meeting Place, then another field would pop up, that would be the E-911 address, corresponding address, so that first responders have, I know I'm going to the left side of the road, I know I'm going to the right side of the road, and the police officers also have both the old address and what's in the E-911, so that there's no confusion over where someone might be that needs help, and my question is, have we gone back to them to say, we found this need in our community, we feel it's a valid need, and it's affecting about 400 people, so would they consider making this modification, which is not a major modification, they're already collecting the data for the old address, and they would be putting in the new address, so it's a matter of saying, if this, this screen appears, so that they have both, and then that, my thought would be, then residents wouldn't need to change their address, and we've met the E-911 requirements, but I don't, that's my question, have you asked that of the software?
That's some of the investigating that I've done.
Can we, I'd like, if the answer, I'd like to know, do you know, answer to that?
I was not aware of the software that she's speaking about, it would be something we would obviously need to investigate.
Okay.
Yeah, so there is, so what I learned.
Definitely have a lot more questions on how that would actually work.
Sure.
Eileen, Eileen, can I say something? This is important, what you're bringing up, and this is why we want to delay indefinitely.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to.
So you and I, you and this board are, are in, are thinking the same things, it's like there's more to this than normal with an E-911 change, and we need to get everything lined up here.
Right, right.
And we understand that, and that's why we're asking to put this off, and again, I apologize to you, 'cause you put a lot of work into this already, and it's no way derogatory towards you, it's just, there's very specific circumstances going on here, and we're just starting to understand that, and that's why we want to put this off.
Makes sense.
And we're gonna, we're gonna tap you for that information, and we're gonna, we're gonna tap you, Eileen, for the information you've put together, we want to get everyone that lives there involved in this discussion, because this is probably the most complex E-911 change we're ever going to make, and there's all kinds of variables in the environment right now, in terms of government, and so we just want to make sure we get this exactly right, because there's a lot at stake for all you folks, and we get it, we get it, and so we don't want to push forward.
We could be proposing something that, I mean, every town is going through this situation, so we could be proposing something that would help the entire state, and maybe our town could be the, the beta testing for it, we used to do beta testing all the time.
Could be.
So that's, that's just why I went here.
Could I just have the name of, of this, this database, or whatever it was?
Could you repeat that, Eileen?
Yeah. Oh, I. This is the first I'm hearing, I'm sorry, I, I.
So the New Hampshire Emergency Services and Communications, they're the Division of the Department of Safety, has information technology, I, that's why I'm like, I would start there, they would know.
Okay, I'll, I'll start my own research, I need to see what you're talking about.
When you go into the post office, you can check your address, and I did this when in, so the addresses we now have presently, it states that they are married through Wi-Fi, any of your Wi-Fi or your home phone, that's how they go through, if somebody doesn't have a phone in their apartment, obviously they can't call 911, they gotta knock on my door like they always do, and I'm gonna call, but the thing is, is the 911 system is tied in with the Wi-Fi, so what the addresses that they all have are what goes, and it told me that 911 and E-911 are married.
Mm-hmm, we're, we're, we're gonna look into that, and I appreciate you, Eileen, coming up forward, are there any other questions of the board? Yes?
Yeah, sure, I mean, you can get it on the website.
I'll tell you what, Jason, Jason, do you mind passing your mic right over to the, to your, right there, thank you.
Hi, Danielle Shapannick, 1 Meeting Place Drive, Apartment 106, I wasn't here in November at the meeting, and it causes us a lot of anxiety to even come, we have, it's really hard, and we had prepared a, a thing to just read, and I don't know, like, it was really hard for us to do this, and now what are we supposed to do with this, 'cause if you don't want to hear it?
No, no, it's not that we don't want to hear it, we heard, we heard, you know, testimony from your neighbors back in the fall, if you have, if you have written something that you would like us to consider, I'm happy to come over and get it from you, and we can put it into the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to be clear, we do want to hear from you, we're very appreciative that you're here tonight, but we don't think we're ready to do this hearing, and so it's not you that's putting this off, it's us.
All right.
Yeah, but we would like to hear from you at a future point, where we would push forward on this perhaps.
Yeah, thanks, Dan.
Hold, hold on, we're dealing, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna treat this as, as correspondence, we're gonna, we're gonna review this, because you did work hard to put this together, and we will all read it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Do we know who it is?
She gave her name for, did you get her name for the?
Thank you. Yeah, and to be clear, I mean, I made that motion, but I didn't want you all to sit through, you know, testimony and, and feeling more and more anxious without, yes, without knowing what my intention was, so thank you so much for coming, and, and we have heard you.
Thank you for making that decision, I think it's helpful at this point.
Can I just ask, are there any other questions? You have a question?
Yes.
Yep, we have, this woman had her own hand up, and then we'll get to you.
Please, and just state your name and address for the record, please. Sure, my name is Susan Weslawski, and my address is 3 Meeting Place Drive, Apartment Number 102 in Exeter, New Hampshire, 03833.
Jason, could you pull my closer down, thank you.
So one of the biggest questions I have regarding this issue, I'm relatively new to the Avesta Housing Meeting Place Commons, and in the fall, I was invited to come to the meeting that was here, and I couldn't make it, but I was really appreciative of people that were informing me of what was transpiring, and one of the biggest questions I've had ever since September, and it continues for me, is I don't personally, for identity purposes, et cetera, et cetera, I don't personally feel safe anymore living in Exeter. It's not Exeter, it's the property where I live, the background that my family has in safety and upholding safety is something that I live with because of my father, my, my family, which is not from Exeter and not from New Hampshire, but the background I have leads me to be in a position of questioning what's going on, and questioning what's going on, and questioning what's going on, and questioning what's going on, I don't need to live like that, I don't need to live in a home where I always feel like I have to question what's going on, and if the safety and security, not only of myself, but other people who live on the property as well, is, is actually safe and secure, so, one of the biggest questions that's come up for me since September is, what is the position of Avesta in this whole process?
You have to talk to them.
Yeah, what is, what is the position that they, that they have, if any, and, and if there is no position that they're taking, what does the town, where, where does the town stand in terms of responsibility, because this is a company that is responsible for the people that live on its property.
Did you want to put your hand up?
The only comment that I have to that is, Avesta did sign the voluntary change of address form as the property owner.
Yeah, they told me when I asked them questions, is our lawyers on here, so she told me that there are lawyers too, but yet I'm not privy to the information, so that's a.
So, an E-911 change of address typically is proposed by the E-911 Committee that's made up of our public safety experts and our code enforcement officer. One of my colleagues said earlier, this is probably the most difficult E-911 request we'll ever consider, typically they're not this difficult, it's, it's being proposed as a matter of public safety, but the reason that we have not acted on it, and that we've tabled it once and perhaps are tabling it again tonight, we'll see, is we're not satisfied that we're doing the right thing at the right time, or we want to make sure that we're doing right by you while, while ensuring that the folks that are here to keep us safe are able to do their jobs properly. So, you know, I don't think it's a, you know, to your point, I can't comment on your property management team, and I'm not going to, but I'm going to say that the goal of the town of Exeter, with this board, with the E-911 Committee, and with your, with your people in our public safety, we're here to keep you safe, and because we want to make sure, as Selectman Chartren said, that we get it right, that's why we have kept pushing this off a little bit, so I hope that answered your question, Mr. Chartren?
Yeah, so there's a few things in my mind that are at play here, first of all, we've never done an E-911 with this kind of density in a building, we've never done it with an apartment building, so that gives me pause, secondly, Eileen actually brought up one of the aspects, there are some folks that maybe aren't going to be able to handle this as well as, you know, sort of folks that have had to deal with this in the past, they might, in, in a, in a emergent situation, they might revert back to their old address, so that's a concern of mine, and Eileen brought that up, so there's just a lot of questions in my mind, and I don't want to push forward and create anyone feeling like they're not safe, or they're anxious about this, I want everyone in those buildings to be ready to go when we finally do this, and, and if there are issues with people not remembering their new address, then yes, we need to address that with maybe alternate fields in the E-911 database, and, you know, I don't know if that's possible, but that, that makes sense to me, so these are all things that we need to work out, that we've never had to deal with before, and I just want to go very slowly and get this exactly right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
If I can speak to the, the one concern, when we have an address change or a change of business, in our, in our software at our dispatch center here in Exeter, if something, somebody gives us an address that isn't correct, we have the ability to find out if there was an alias to the number, or the business name, or the property name of that property. or the business name, or the property name of that property. So we have that with- I can't speak to E911 up at the state level, but I would imagine that if we have it here in our local town dispatch center, that they have it up there. But I don't wanna speak for them.
But we'll make sure.
So, but yes, I will make sure.
Thank you for that. Did that answer your question, ma'am?
Yes, it answers my question. It helps me to know and understand that there's a little more clarity here than I- than I'd been led to believe that there is. The question that I have still, and I would present this to the Town of Exeter, is, and I don't think- I don't think that next week, next month, if- if I'm still here next year, you know, that this is gonna change for me. Because I've- I've- I've gone back and forth in my own mind and talked with people not to know. This is- this is how I stand in terms of safety and security. And coming from- and I won't- I won't expand upon that, because I- I really can't. But in terms of safety and security, whether I live in, you know, the state of Washington, the state of Oregon, the state of Florida, the state of Nebraska, the state of New Hampshire, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, wherever I live, I personally need to know that I'm safe. Because otherwise, I'm going to be in a position that's going backwards in time, rather than living in the day and age that I live in, having to put in measures in- measures in place in my own life to- to make sure that I'm safe. We live in a day and age, unfortunately, where there's a lot of safety concerns. And- and they're always- it seems like that's gonna- that's gonna be something that, what we're living with now is going to be that way. Countrywide, you see it on the media everywhere, safety is- safety is a concern. It's a big concern in this country. I am concerned about the responsibility that's being taken or not taken, because it's responsibility. Responsibility that's being taken or not taken, and the word I will use, because it's a very strong word, if there is neglect, the part of a property management ownership that owns the property, they're the owners of the property. If there is neglect of the safety and security of the people that are living on the property in terms of taking responsibility for what's going on, and this is falling into a position where it's like, this is what's happening.
I think you need to talk to Maine.
I- I don't personally think I need to talk to Maine. I personally believe that responsibility is responsibility when it comes to land ownership. That's- that's that.
Well, yeah, that's what I said, Maine, because it's Avesta.
Yeah, but responsibility in terms of land ownership falls on the- on the- on the part of the landowners, no matter what. So if there's people who are living on the property, and there's only 10 people living on the property, or, you know, their responsibility is to only 10 people. They have responsibility here in Exeter, the Town of Exeter, New Hampshire, to a large number of people. And if they are not taking that responsibility seriously, who- who emphasizes to them, certainly not me, who emphasizes to them, you know, wait a minute, you own and manage the property, you are responsible to this, and it is not an option for you to neglect and not- not answer questions that people who live on the property, who are trying to stay safe in their home, have. If we have questions, you need to answer the questions. You can't, you know, pass them off, tell them to go to a town meeting. You need to answer their questions. You are the owners of the property.
Then you have to manage.
No, no.
I understand, I understand.
They're no- nothing to do with it.
Avesta- Avesta is- are the owners of the property.
Mr. Chartren?
So the- the subject of this public hearing tonight was the E911 system, which touches on safety.
Yes, it does.
We are not confident that we're ready to move forward and keep everyone safe. So- so- so let me- let me-
Next time, yeah?
We- it's not our job to make sure they're here. It's our job to work with our citizens. And that's what we're doing right now. So we take your safety and your security and your peace of mind very seriously. And- and that is why we are stepping back tonight. So I hear you loud and clear, and our actions are right in line with how I hear you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I- I understand what you're saying, and I also understand a little bit of what's between the lines here, and I get it. And I feel those things as well.
Thank you.
So fear not. We're not gonna move forward on E911, which is our responsibility, until we're satisfied that all the residents of these properties have their safety assured in their minds, their security assured in their minds, and their- and no anxiety. Okay? That's our commitment to you.
Mr. Chartren, thank you.
So I heard you, and we understand. And- and for now, we can stop, but we will be in communication again.
Thank you.
Excuse me, ma'am, this- are you done with- you done with your question? Okay.
I really respect and appreciate the fact that you're here.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming. This gentleman had his hand up, and then I know you have your hand up after, okay? We could pass the mic to you, maybe, but we need you to use the mic.
Don't get in near your device, please.
And just your name and address.
I understand this.
Name and address.
We can hear- no, you're good, you're good.
I understand this town meeting, you're not taking complaints, issues, or whatever, because it's a closed meeting. Who can we deal with to give you some information that's been heavily investigated to explain to you what would go on with changing actual street addresses along with 911? Why I wanna contact person, because I think they'll learn a lot when they see this information.
So, so, okay, let me- let me just- let me just say, this is not a closed meeting. This is an open public meeting. This is a select board public meeting. We opened a public hearing on this matter, and then we closed the public hearing, and we referenced that we heard your testimony back in the fall when you all were here. And if, in fact, a motion is made, we're jumping ahead here, because I wanted to take questions, okay?
Yeah.
We're jumping ahead here. If a motion is made and it is tabled, there will be something in the future at some time at which we have- we remain committed to working with you, to keeping you updated as to when the meetings are. There's- there's nothing that's not open and public here in this room with this board on this matter. If you have information that you would like to discuss offline, I'm happy. You- you have my contact information.
Yeah, I've sent you-
I'm hap- I'm happy to talk with you. But for now, we are going through a public process. Even though the public hearing is closed, this is a public, open meeting. I just wanna be very clear there. I'd really like to hear from this gentleman first.
Can someone hand the mic over to him? Thank you.
Thank you.
Nico, the woman behind him was trying to speak as well.
My name is Kevin Trotter. I've lived in Exeter since last Halloween, when I moved into Avesta Apartments. So I live at Number 3, Apartment 104, next to Sue, actually. I understand where she's coming from, but I just wanna let everyone know that my only concern is what am I gonna put on my driver's license for an address? Because my- it's coming up in May. So it goes through the car registration. These are things that have your proper address for a long time, and I gotta do it soon. So I just wanted to have the correct address to input. The one that they contested, the one that I used to, or the new one that I don't know is never gonna be-
If this- if this is tabled this evening, your address is the address that you have now.
Okay, I'm gonna keep that then.
Would you pass the microphone to the person behind you, because I think you had your hand up, didn't you?
No problem.
I cut you off, and I felt bad about that.
No, I just didn't- I understand why you have to fix me in tables, that's all.
Can you-
I just wanna say a couple things. As far as Avesta corporate, I love them. They've helped me a lot, and they're kind of a little bit of aloof, you know? Like, they don't like to connect with people too often, but when it's necessary, they do, and they do a good job. As far as safety, you just saw Exeter's finest get all these awards, and I love those guys.
They're doing a good job.
Thank you.
Lee Officer Steve.
Thank you very much. Yep, if you have a question?
Hi, I'm Deb Weaver. I live at 4 Meeting Place, and I've been there for about 12, 13 years now. And I also work over at the hospital. We have until May to get that real ID, and I've already had one. If you- if we have our address changes, how are we gonna go about getting a new ID? Because you can't change anything on your real ID without being there in person. So that also means you got 400 people that are now gonna have to have those real IDs with proof of everything that, you know, I had to give them my birth certificate, my marriage certificate, my divorce certificate, all this stuff, just to prove I was-
No, I understand, and I think that once- once we're done with your questions and Selectwoman Cowan can speak to whatever motion she wants to make, we might be able to answer that.
Yes, maybe you can find out from the state ahead of time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I have just a question. I don't know who it would actually go to, but is there an address management department for Exeter? Is that what they call it? I know that other towns that I looked up, they have an address management department that assigns addresses within the town, along with the post office and stuff. I ask this only because of the bank address and where it stands. I know that it's gonna come up, even if this gets tabled permanently, it's gonna come up as an issue. Because the bank is Number 2, and they have two subdivided, I think two, maybe three subdivided parcels. You would probably know that better than I. And I'm just wondering, you know, because it was facing, we went through this before, facing Epping Road. It should have been Epping, but because of the way north and south goes and the center lane of turning right and left, there was no space to put an entrance. So they put an entrance going north only, and then made Meeting Place their entrance. So I just wondered, you know, going forward, wouldn't it have made more sense to rename that little spot as like Meeting Place Plaza, Unit 123, or Unit ABC, instead of taking numbers, because they were talking about, when it comes up on the map, of giving the bank Number 3, which now is a build, one of the apartments down back. So it's like, that is a confusing thing. So I just think that that's some- that's one of the things that I had in there, that I think there's a- Talking to people, I think that there's other avenues that can be visited on that, you know? And the thing is, not so cut and dry that Avesta is, they don't discuss things with us. But that's another issue that we will take care of when this is settled, you know? The work and progress.
It is. Are there any other questions of the board? Okay, seeing no other questions, I'll bring it back to the board.
I move to table.
Second.
For-
I mean, I would move to table indefinitely. But I also, I would, before we do that, I think that we have a lot of things to discuss with the E911 committee. I think we have a lot of things to discuss. But I do not want to foist any changes on the residents of this town as we're making a bunch of documentation changes, as we're getting real ID requirements, as we are, you know? I- I- I don't think that this is the time to do that.
There's a lot at play right now. So your motion is to table this matter indefinitely?
That'll- yes.
And I will second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
No, I think it's all been said. We need- we need to see what the state has. I'm actually looking at what was recommended, and it looks like there's some more we can do together, so.
So the E911 committee, the select board, public safety, you're gonna continue to work on how we can best move forward in a place that makes you safe and makes you safe. As you know, if you write to me, if you contact me, I'm happy to talk to you offline, so. There's a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you all for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Could we have just a few minutes?
So anybody can I just say something to the people in here?
Can you do it in the hallway? Thanks. I'm gonna ask the board for their indulgence if we could take a five-minute recess.
Sure.
Hey, it is 8:10. The board will reconvene at 8:15. The board is recessed.
Eight ten.
Okay, the board is returning from a small recess, and thank everybody who's still here, and certainly those watching at home, for your indulgence in allowing us a five-minute break. We're back to business. We'll be getting into our regular business at this point. And Madam Clerk, I would look to you for our exemptions and credits and abatements.
Okay. So I'll start with the elderly exemptions. MAP 64, Lot 54, Unit 2. I'm going to just kind of do a bunch of them. I just realized that there's one, two, three, four. Okay. MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 287. MAP 104, Lot 79, Unit 522. MAP 103, Lot 13, Unit 19. All in the amount of $152,251 each for the tax year 2024.
Second.
What?
Twenty twenty-five.
Oh, my God, I'm looking at twenty twenty-four, five, yeah. Excuse me, for 2025.
I would still second it.
Okay. Joanne, you got it. It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for catching that, Mr. Chair. Okay. MAP 104, Lot 79, Unit 109, in the amount, in the amount of $183,751 for the tax year 2025.
Again, second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 168, for the tax year 2025, I move for that to be denied.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
MAP 64, Lot 105, Unit 74, I move, for the tax year 2025, I move for that to be denied.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 360, in the amount of $236,251 for the tax year 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 102, in the amount of $236,251 for the tax year 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
MAP 104, Lot 79, Unit 226, for tax year 2025, I move for that to be denied.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
And MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 24, in the amount of $152,251 for the tax year 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, for the disability exemptions, I move the following. MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 194, and MAP 63, Lot 209, each in the amount of $125,000 for the tax year 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
And veteran tax, veteran credit, excuse me, I move the following. MAP 96, Lot 1, MAP 91, Lot 15, MAP 72, Lot 16, each in the amount of $500 for the tax year 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, for the proration assessment abatement, I move for MAP 11, Lot 12, in the amount of 100, excuse me, $1,295 for the tax year 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, Madam Clerk. There's several permits and approvals this evening. Steve, you're last on the list, but why don't you come up first? Our Public Works Director, Steve Cronin, this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So for you tonight is a request from the Public Works Department to transfer $40,000 from the sewer reserve fund to address an issue that we're having with Clarifier 1 at the wastewater treatment facility. Last fall, we took the clarifier offline to perform some routine maintenance, which basically was comprised of an interior inspection of the tank and maintenance with some of the routine wear components, oil changes, those types of things. While the tank was offline, we discovered a couple of different issues. First of all, we were experiencing some groundwater intrusion to the tank, and we also noticed that the clarifier, the mechanical mechanisms of the clarifier, had shifted from their originally installed location. We reached out to a consultant, who came in, confirmed that there was something out of alignment, and then we immediately contacted the design engineer for the facility. They came out with the manufacturer of the tank and basically looked at it and said that we had two separate issues. The groundwater intrusion issue was a result of some leakage through some of the precast joints in the tank. That's something that, it's not common, but it has happened before in other installations. The tank itself is under warranty, so they're going to make that repair through the warranty. At that point, we did ask our consultants to do a survey of the tank to make sure that the elevation hadn't changed in any way. They confirmed that it hadn't. So we were able to narrow it down to just the mechanical components. At that point, unfortunately, we were into winter. The mechanical installer couldn't get here, so we basically refilled the tank and made it through the winter, you know, making sure that nothing froze to make it any worse. We drained it down as soon as we could at the end of the winter, got Amwell out here, the manufacturer of the components. They looked at it and couldn't tell us why things had moved out of plum. At this point, our consultant's recommending that we deconstruct those components with somebody on site to inspect them to try to figure out what's going on. Amwell has offered to do that work for us. They've given us a proposal for $36,000. So we're looking for sewer reserve funds so we can move that, move on that as soon as possible. It is critical, because we're not able to take the other tanks down to perform any routine maintenance on those, and if we were to have a failure in any of those components, we'd really be in a world of hurt. So that's really for the, that's why the sense of urgency for this tonight. So the proposal's for $36,000. We're asking for 40. That gives us about 10% contingency in case we run into any unforeseen issues.
Understood. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes.
Any questions of...
How many clarifiers are there total?
We have three total. You know, when we did the survey and inspection of one, we also did the survey of two and three. The elevation on those are fine. We're not seeing the same issue with the shifting of the mechanical components, but we are concerned that, you know, this did happen during a routine maintenance operation, so, you know, if we were to take those offline, we run the risk of it, you know, if there is an issue related to all three of it happening there as well. So we really want to get down to the bottom of the issue on number one before we're comfortable taking the other ones offline.
Got it. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to release $40,000 from the sewer reserve funds to make necessary repairs to Clarifier Number 1 at the wastewater treatment facility.
So moved.
Second.
So motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, moving back. We have a request from Chief Pullen to amend highway safety grant that looked fairly straightforward in the memo, but Mr. Dean, did you want to speak to this?
Yeah, I can. This is for the purchase of a mobile data terminal printer and a computer mount for the K-9 Cruiser, and it's an amendment to a current grant that the department has. So in the motion, what we'd be looking for is to amend the grant amount by $1,423.59.
Okay. As I said, the memo's pretty straightforward. Are there any questions of the board?
No.
Okay. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to amend the FFY 25 New Hampshire Office of Highway Safety Grant amount from $17,225 to $18,649.05 for the additional purchase of one docking station and hardware, one compatible printer, and one printer mount with accessories.
So moved.
Second.
So motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Dean. Then we have a donation of some money to go towards the Comfort Dog, and again, that memo was fairly straightforward in the packet. Are there any questions?
No, but I just want to point out about the letter, too, and the, and the resident thanking, and it just so happens that somebody I went to high school with.
Terrific.
Yes, Norma.
I was touched to read that.
Yeah, so if anyone's to read her thank you letter for the police coming out and assisting them and the professionalism, so.
Okay.
And thank, yes.
I appreciate you bringing that up. I would entertain a motion that the Select Board accept the $250 donation received from John and Norma Morrow for expenses related to caring for the town's Comfort Dog, disbursement of the funds to be made by authorization of the town manager or their designee for Comfort Dog expenses during the current budget year.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
And it's a nice way to say thank you for the services that the town provides.
It is. Thank you. Mr. Stevens or Mr. Dean, the two you could flip a coin, but we want to talk about the police detail fees?
Yeah, I'll call in the Finance Director to speak to this.
Hello, Mr. Stevens?
Easily could have been handled by Mr. Dean, but here I am. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
There's a memo in your packet this evening requesting a slight increase in the police detail fees that we charge to the community for those services. As way of background, recently, we received notice from the police union that we would be increasing the hourly rate we pay to officers for those services from $60 to $65 an hour, and that starts May 5. Police detail hourly rate is something that's under the purview of the police union, and we've just followed suit, and we would charge the community the new fee ourselves. But it prompted me to take a quick look at the other components of that fee, that being the police cruiser fee, an administrative fee to process invoices and take in revenue, along with the $65 an hour fee to the officers. And I found that we might, we haven't raised our admin fee in quite some time, so I'm making the recommendation this evening that we increase that fee by $5. And just for a little bit of detail, it'll raise it to $20 an hour. What we do is we split that fee basically equally between the police special detail fund, and a little bit goes to the general fund as well. And the hope would be that maybe if the special detail fund were to accumulate funds, at some point, maybe there's the ability to buy equipment, perhaps a vehicle out of it. But as it stands now, it's kind of a wash, or even in some instances, we lose a little bit of money on the service. So this will kind of bring it on par with what it's costing us, and perhaps in some years, make us a little bit of money.
Great. Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Stevens?
I just want to thank you for pointing out that it really is a wash for the most part. We're not looking to...
That's right.
...at unnecessary cost to people. We're trying to cover our own costs, so thank you for that.
There are no further questions, and I would entertain a motion to authorize the town manager to increase the administrator fee for police detail services from the current rate of $15 an hour to $20 an hour effective May 5, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Mr. Dean?
So this is a resolution opposing Senate Bill 297. This was promulgated by the NHMA, and they are requesting cities and towns to sign on to this. Basically, we've been talking about Senate Bill 297 and the issues with the proposed legislation. Just by way of an update, tomorrow, I'll be meeting with NHMA board members with a couple of members of the Health Trust, and then on Thursday of this week, the Secretary of State will appear before the Health Trust Board for a conversation about the bill.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Dean? And you're looking for us to sign this?
Yes.
Okay. I think we would do so gladly, but I would entertain a motion to authorize the Select Board to sign the resolution opposing New Hampshire Senate Bill 297?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Dean.
You're welcome.
And now we have a request for tax interest refund, and I thought that the, again, the email gave some good background as did the supporting documentation, but did you just want to sum this up briefly for us?
Yes, the property owner paid the tax bill in full on April 1, and is requesting a refund in the interest amount of $442.10, and there were some extenuating circumstances that related to this situation. So that's why the request has been made of us.
Were there any questions?
Straightforward to me.
Yeah.
Is it typical for us to...
We've done this in the past, yeah. There's precedent, and I think the circumstances were clearly explained.
Yep.
Actually, some legislation proposing we do this anytime we give an abatement order. Sorry, back payments for taxes.
Mr. Dean, is this technically an abatement or a refund?
It's an interest waiver.
Interest waiver?
Yes.
I would entertain a motion to grant, to grant an interest waiver in the amount of $442.10 for parcel ID 478405?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. I believe those are all the permits and approvals, so Mr. Dean, the town manager's report, please.
Sure. We are continuing on with the HR office downstairs that is being constructed as we speak, and the job, I believe, is being advertised shortly. So we're working... So we're working on that. The senior coordinator, we're still getting lots of applications for that position, which is nice. The pickpocket dam grant was confirmed on April 8, so we are going to receive that $310,000 we've been waiting for, which is great news for the town.
That is great news.
Fantastic.
Great to hear. I held a water rates meeting with the E-Team and Mr. Kelly on April 1, and that went well. It was, we'll get some similar notes to the sewer meeting and pass those along when we get them. Then there was a School Street of Butters meeting on April 3. We have worked to update the train track upgrade schedule online, and those new dates have been posted, so people should go to the website and look for those dates. It will, the work will be done the 16th, 17th, and 18th of April, so people should be aware of that. The septic receiving facility is now operational, and we're going to begin accepting septic the week of the 28th of April, which is good news. Then the Linden Street Bridge project bid opening will be April 28, and West Side Drive, we're still waiting for DES approval on that, but we're looking to have a bid opening on May 27 for that particular project. And I just wanted to alert the board that we are having some website issues as far as the vendors go. We're looking to update our website. We need to do it later this year, and there's going to be a cost to it, which we'll report back to you on. We've been working internally on that issue and trying to, trying to work our way through it. And then we, if you remember in the budget process in FY25, we set aside $1,800 to purchase podcasting equipment, so we're actually going to get podcasting up and running in the next few weeks.
That's your report?
That's my report.
What, can I ask specifically what's going on with the website? Do you have any, is it affecting folks being able to?
No, this is just an upgrade issue.
I see. Okay.
So it's not going to affect people's use of the website at all.
Okay. So the public are still able to access?
Yes.
All their needs?
Yes.
Okay. And can you elaborate on the podcasting?
Yeah, so we are looking to have a show called All Things Exeter, and I will be part of that. That, that is the plan, to do some of the podcasting. Bob Glouacki will be working with us too, to do other podcasts as well, and we're just looking to kick, get it kicked off.
How does that work? I've never podcasted, so I don't know.
Well, take certain amount, certain type of equipment, and basically you sit and record shows for probably 15 minutes is what we've been talking about at a time. And we've come up with some different ideas about interviewing staff members and other people that are in the town government structure, just to do meet and greet type things and information pieces for the community.
Mr. Chair?
Please.
So this would be somewhat loosely scripted. You'd know what you were going to talk about ahead of time?
Yes.
Would just be open-ended?
Yes.
Got it. That's great.
And this was discussed with leadership and department heads are comfortable?
Yes.
Doing this type of thing?
Yes, everybody is on board.
Okay. Any other questions or thoughts?
Not at this time.
Okay. When, when are you going to start?
First week in May is what we've set as a date.
Okay. Yeah, we'll be interested in hearing more about that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Select Board Committee reports. Select, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
You were going to do the Housing Advisory Committee, because I was sick.
Oh, yeah, so Housing Advisory Committee meeting on Friday was a good meeting. We heard about the zoning mandates that are coming through the state legislature, of which there are several, and that was the main point of discussion, the main focus of the meeting.
Legislative updates on that?
Legislative update, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, I didn't know that. Selectwoman Gilman?
I had, I had no meetings, town meetings, except for there were two demolition reviews for the Heritage Commission. One is that house on Front Street that's been undergoing lots of repairs plus additions and other changes, and that's coming up for, this Thursday's HDC meeting. And another was at Main, on Main Street, I think it's 49, the small white auto garage that's been there forever is being demolished or proposed to be demolished. I was not available for that demo review. I want to talk about the state and goings-on, but I'll wait till everybody's done and sit over there, because I might not be so nonpartisan.
That's honesty for you. Good girl.
Okay, thank you. Selectwoman Blair?
Okay, so I missed some things last week because I was sick at the second half of the week. I did want to update that our police chief Pullen had sent me an email. I had asked a few questions at our last meeting about insurance coverage, and he said that everything's covered, so I just wanted to kind of give that update. So Planning Board on Thursday, April 10, there was a sidewalk that morning at 57 Portsmouth Ave, and then it was heard that evening. I missed both, but I did watch the Planning Board meeting that night, so I can say that 112 Front Street was approved. There are a few conditions, but it was approved on Thursday night. I'm going to, I give a little plug to Exeter TV, that their biweekly report on Friday was excellent. It's sad, I know some people are sad to see the house go, but the owners of the property allowed the fire department to do some drills, so, you know, it was kind of a, I think, an honorary way of seeing it going, in my mind anyway, so watch the biweekly report. And then, let's see, then 57 Portsmouth Ave was accepted as complete for review purposes. There was a discussion and then tabled, which was where I was getting my ideas from. And then another quick one was heard that night, Dade Auto Holdings, which is the Volvo Cars of Exeter, they were approved for a 6,200 square foot addition in the rear of their existing dealership, and that's my.
That's great, thank you. And I'm glad you're feeling better.
Thank you.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Nothing.
Mr. Chair, great.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I attended a Sustainability Advisory Committee meeting on Wednesday, April 2, at 7:00 PM. We had a guest speaker from Dover, who's a volunteer there. He talked about solid waste management and some of the things Dover has done to study the issue and the direction they're going in, as well as recycling. It was very informative, and I'm very grateful to that gentleman whose name I can't remember. So that is well worth watching that meeting to hear his report. We also discussed at that meeting our Styrofoam Recycling Collection event that is taking place on Saturday, April 26, from 9:00 to 11:00 at DPW, so that's just a week from this coming Saturday. I attended a Concom meeting on the 8th of April, Tuesday, at 7:00 PM. It was a great meeting. And upcoming, on the 23rd of April, Facilities Advisory Committee has their space needs assessment. They're a regular monthly meeting, but we're going to be doing this space needs assessment, and that'll run from 5:00 to 7:00. And again, I want to remind Selectwoman Gilman that we would love to have you there.
On my calendar.
No pressure.
And I have no conflicts.
Thank you. That's my report.
Thank you. The Tree Committee met, excuse me, April 8. We talked about that earlier, with the sixth year in a row of the Tree City USA designation. They talked about some programs that they'll be working on conjunction with the elementary schools, they'll be at the ALY Festival, and continuing to identify where we're going to use the tree budget. We had our representative from Unitil there that spoke about what Unitil is doing to replace trees that have to be taken down, and I want to say that the Tree Committee Chair, Eileen Flockhart, gave a presentation at the Conservation Commission about the great work that the Tree Committee's been doing.
She did, I neglected to mention. Thank you for calling that out.
So Pearpoint Park Commission met on Thursday of last week, and that was about an hour and a half meeting, and they have decided on, or they reviewed three different plans that one of the volunteers on the committee, who's also on the Planning Board, Jen Martell, drew up. There was some discussion.
That was so great.
There was some, it was, it was really, she did a tremendous job. And there's so much more discussion that they need to have, that they're going to have another meeting this Thursday on the 17, and they are hoping to come before the select board with a recommendation. They're going to present all three final options to the board, but they'll have a recommendation for us. Talked about the current climate financially and how, you know, we may need to come to the point where we have to phase this project. Their goal is to get this on a CIP, but they also recognize that there could be other needs. They understand that there may not be grants, and frankly, depending upon how things go, they understand they might have to hit, might have to hit brakes a little bit, but that's all to be determined. This is not a meeting, but I want to say the Planet Playground Ceremony was supposed to be on, on Saturday, but of course, with the snowstorm, so it's been postponed to this Saturday, I believe at 11 o'clock, Melissa?
Yeah. Easter egg hunt at 10, and then Planet Playground at 11.
Yeah, that's okay. So hopefully, folks can attend that. And I just wanted to give a shout out to Exeter TV and Gabe in particular for the segment they did on the fire department. If you haven't seen it, you should watch. It's fantastic. Great job.
Yeah, and the fire department has it on their Facebook page, too. I noticed that late earlier.
Excellent. Tremendous. Okay, correspondents, we have a flyer from the Town of Exeter advertising the Exeter Accessibility Forum, Let Scale Beyond the ADA. This will be a forum on improving accessibility in town. It's going to be held right here in the, in the Novak Room on Wednesday, May 7, 2025, beginning at 5:30 PM, and we hope that that's well attended. We had a memo from Community Power Coalition. We had a letter to me from Congressman Chris Pappas regarding public funds and his commitment to always trying to help the Town of Exeter when he can, which he has done a great deal in the past. Letter of thanks from the Exeter Area Chamber of Commerce for our extension of their renewal that we took up at our last meeting, and finally, the legislative bulletin from the So now, I'm going to ask everyone if they are.
The disposable batteries, just so people know.
I missed that one. Want to take that?
Okay, my voice is gone, but I'm going to get it done. There's also a notice in our packet for New Hampshire rechargeable battery disposal ban that starts July 1, 2025. It will be legal to put rechargeable lithium batteries in our trash. I can give you the RSA, it's 149-dash-M, semicolon, 27, and I'm going to list items out, so it would be electric bikes and scooters. So these are batteries found in many rechargeable electric devices. Electric bikes and scooters, cordless power tools, lawn care equipment, portable devices, including cell phones, laptops, tablets, wireless headphones, I would not have guessed that one, Bluetooth speakers, some toys, personal care items, including, but not limited to, toothbrushes, shavers, and water picks. And finally, I'm just going to let you know where you can go to dispose of these items. Staples, best by Home Depot and Batteries Plus.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I missed that. Thought about the board calendar since our last meeting, because Selectwoman Cowan has conflicts on every date we had scheduled in May, and I'd like to run by you a revised calendar.
I was going to be a smartie, but I.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, what, we get the month of May off? I know better. It was just a really, it was just a joke.
That was, that was my plan, just kidding.
I actually added meetings. No, I didn't, I didn't.
That I wouldn't.
So I, I took a glance at the calendar over the weekend and came up with a couple of different options, and I did reach out to Selectwoman Cowan to run one of the dates by her to make sure she was available, and I wanted to avoid us getting together four Mondays in a row, because I, I think that would be a bit much for all of us. So everything I'm going to propose after May 12 is going to be contrary to what we've already put in our calendars, so that's why I'm going to go very slowly.
Thank you.
And please stop me if I'm going too fast. Our goal-setting session is scheduled for, for next Monday, April 21. That's at 7:00 PM at the Senior Center?
Mm-hmm.
With Bill Keegan facilitating.
Good, he is available?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Our next select board meeting, as we've already discussed, is April 28. Then after that, as we've already discussed, May 12, with the acknowledgement that Selectwoman Cowan will not be here. Okay, from there, we go to May 19. So that'll be two in a row.
Mm-hmm.
And we will, we will take away that other May date. Scratch that?
A Tuesday?
Yes. So I'll repeat, in May, it's May 12 and May 19. In June, we will meet three times. June 2, June 16, and June 30.
Okay, hold on.
So just backing up, Mr. Chair? 527 is off the board now.
Correct.
Thank you.
And so is it May 9? I'm sorry, June 9 is off the board, correct? Okay.
Yeah, June and July were, just scrap what was in there, because it's, it all changed.
Yeah, no, I'm just.
No, it's going to, that's why.
Yeah, thank you.
My time here.
Okay, so June, so June 9 is.
Yep.
Wrong.
Delete that. So I'll repeat June again, June 2, June 16, and June 30.
Glad you did that, because I missed the 2nd, so. Okay, 16.
June 30.
Okay.
I took vacation that week, because it was coming. Okay.
Let me know when you can get into July?
No.
So the 23 also goes away, right?
That is correct. Ready for July?
Uh-huh.
Okay. July 14?
So not July 7?
Correct. All right. And July 28, not July 21?
I'm sorry, after the 14th was the 21st? Oh, 28th, not the 21st.
Correct, yes.
Thank you for going slow, because this. Okay, 28. Okay, I'm ready. Poor Molly. We're all going to stay on it.
If we, if we want to continue there every two weeks, then we'd have August 11, and I'm going to stop there.
Yeah, it's okay, because I just, because I'm in here every, yeah, automatically, so.
And I'm happy to repeat all those if.
Happy birthday, Russ. We have a meeting that night.
Thank you.
Wait, it's a break.
Okay, so I'm going to note that, that is the last one scheduled. Asterisk. Where's my asterisk? There it is.
All right, does everyone have those? Do we want me to read them through them again?
Nope.
Okay.
Got them.
Got them.
Mr. Dean, did you get them?
Yes, I got them all.
All right, so I'm sorry, my apologies to Pam, but she'll have to.
Rework the.
Rework the schedule on the website.
Yep.
Well, I won't have a conflict with the Arts Committee meeting.
Well, that's good. And we'll do our best to try to make sure that there's, on the, May 12, nothing that, you know, you'd want to be.
Feel free to pack it with all the controversial stuff.
Okay.
I feel like I actually make this.
Okay, everyone good with the calendar?
Yes. Yes.
There's no other business. There's no other business. I would entertain a motion to enter into non-public under RSA 91A 32. I'm sorry, oh!
Mr. Chair, I would like.
I'm so sorry, please.
Do my representative role.
Hold that.
That was not intentional, I apologize.
If you're the least bit political or watching anything that's happening at the State House, it was a really tough Thursday. We started at 10:00 and ended at 6:30-ish with a 45-minute break caused by, the Republican Party needed to caucus. So we got kicked out of the room in 45 minutes, got to stretch our legs. We went over the state budget. House Bill 2 is the part where all of the policy changes happen. And House Bill 1 is where the numbers are crunched. They each had things. They each had, they each had things. In House Bill 1, there were going to be more shifts of cost down to property taxpayers because of, well, because of where they want to raise funds. There's slashes to eliminate our funding for family planning, mental health, developmental services increases. Let's see, undermines public education. It cuts $50 million from the university system of New Hampshire. It's already struggling. Our tuitions are already too high for students who want to go to college to stay in-state. And we're just not going to give them any money. And that passed fairly closely, 192 to 181. House Bill 2 had many, many amendments to it. And I can go through them all, but the worst things, I have to say, there were no good things. The worst things were cutting the State Council on the Arts, completely, gone. They tried to get rid of the Travel and Tourism Bureau, which is, as many people might know, travel and tourism is their number-two industry. So getting rid of it just makes us a blank slate of estate. And with no thing to put on it at all. They tried, that one got reinstated as well as the, they had tried to change the Bureau of Land and Tax Appeals. Just get rid of it. And that was saved and put back in. A universal voucher system was approved. What was the other thing? Oh. Keno, which has been, a local decision to adopt allowing keno in your community. That has now become, or in the, in the House program, has become a, you can have it anywhere you want. Nobody's got to vote on it, just go forward. And that also includes video slot machines, so, you know, we don't want casinos, but guess what? We're going to get some. That was, you know, the message I always have received is we don't want gambling in our town. But now, we don't, Select Board doesn't even have to say yea or nay, but if somebody wants to start a business, let them go ahead. The cut to the Council on the Arts had the testimony, not the testimony, but the discussion on it. I just, it sticks in my head that the Chair of the Finance Committee said charities can just ask for donations. They don't need any help from the state. And, you know, charities are already existing on donations, and we need all the help we can get. One thing that we did defeat was instating a mandatory budget cap on municipalities, or schools, I'm sorry. A mandatory budget cap of 3%. We managed to get that out of, out of the budget. So that was a good thing. The Office of Child Advocate was next. It's gone. I think that does a real disservice to this, to the state, to so many residents. Child immunizations are no longer going to be required.
Regional Planning Commissions were defunded.
Yeah, that's another one for us. On the, so with the planning, with the regional planning commissions and the keno, is that a done deal now? Or is that possible that the Governor could put that back in?
Right now, it's just been approved by the House.
Okay, that's.
Crossover day, so we had to get it done.
Yeah.
So now it goes to the Senate, so please, people, communicate with all senators, not just yours.
So that was the question I had for you, Representative Gilman. Is this is what was approved by the House?
Right.
And now it's going to the Senate, so none of this is final, final?
No. And in fact, it was a surprisingly close vote, given, given how some of the amendments, all the things that I was talking about were, that were removed or reinstated or amendments to what was presented to us. The Governor gave her budget proposal in February. The House Finance goes through it first, and they decided that she was over inflating or relying on different revenues than they thought were possible and had to cut up to $80 million, I think it was, or more. And so they started taking out little tiny pieces parts, and, you know, the Council on the Arts is one of them. But we expand the school voucher system, and there's actually a bill to allow a student to go to any school they want in the state. So they don't have to live in Exeter.
So transportation.
That wasn't considered. So the, so the final, some of those amendments were, went out on 280, or 245 to 170 something, if that adds up to 400. But when it came to the final vote with all the amendments on it, it was 198 to 167, which is probably one of the closer votes that we had at the House. So now all of that's going to go to, and, you know, please, please read up on it. I can give you a couple of different sources. I would recommend the NHMA Legislative Bulletin. But they, there are many things that go beyond NHMA. And there have been a lot of articles, WMUR's covered many things, New Hampshire Bulletin, New Hampshire Journal, depending on which, which you like. It's an email newsletter. But talk to, talk to your senators, call them. And you can go onto each committee, and you can email them all at one time, so you don't have to write five times or cut-and-paste emails. And that's my, that's my report.
Courts have also been heavily cut, correct?
Oh, right, and the courts and the Department of Safety, incorrect?
Yes.
They're cutting 100 positions or, or just about 100 positions or more, but about 900 of those are filled.
Yeah, there's some mandates for our court systems to issue in certain areas of law decisions within 60 days. And then they've cut, our Chief Justice did a really tight budget and cut quite a few, quite a bit of money, and then they, I think, even doubled that, so.
There's probably, there's also a mandate on Planning Board's response to decisions.
Yeah, the only thing I saw was, which was weird, was start time and end time and the Secretary's, the recording secretary's signature.
There's a lot of bills that have come up that we already actually do those things. And so it makes you wonder, what are those times out there?
Who hasn't been doing it? I thought that was.
We've had a lot of tax cap bills come through my committee, all from the same person. So I just have to ask what's happening in that town. But.
Good.
Well, there's already law for some of the things they wanted to do, but we've, we've switched over. So now at the House's hearing, Senate bills, my committee, Municipal County Government, only has 11 bills, which is a real surprise. Probably have to do with tax caps. I'm not sure yet, we haven't seen them. And because the Senate has fewer committees, these, their bills are going to get spread out amongst the 20 or so that we have. So I can't tell you, just look at municipal and election laws in one committee in the Senate, but those bills are going to go out to different House committees, so.
And the point of this is that although some of them might not trickle down to our local taxes, several are going to, if passed.
Yes, yeah. It's not downshifting.
But it is.
We were told. All right, thank you very much for.
Thank you, Representative Gilman. Let's wait for her to come back and be Selectwoman.
And be Select Board again. Thank you, Julie, that was good.
Thank you, Julie. If there's no other business, I would entertain a motion to enter into non-public under 91A 32A and B.
Sum up.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk for Roku?
Selectwoman Chartran?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Gilman?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Mr. Chair, Madam Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair?
Aye. It's unanimous. Court will be moving into non-public. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8. With all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune in to our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune in to our other content as well.